Cleveland Business Network. For those who don't know me, my name is Darren Winter. I'm the company director of Dico Digital. And with Karen King from King's Celebrant Services, we co-manage the Redcar and Cleveland Business Network. Thank you to Redcar and Cleveland Borough Council, who provide the roof, refreshments and underground car parking for free. And to Bead Financial, we support the website redcarandclevelandbusinessnetwork.com. If you haven't seen the website, please have a click on that later on. All the events are recorded and will be available to watch again on our social networks later today. I have to write this down because it gets longer every month, so I'll forget them now. There's no fire alarm evacuation plan, so if the alarm does sound, please follow the green running man out of the main staircase or follow the signs at the right of the door. You'll also find the beloos if you need them. I just want to insert this little thing as caveat. Before moving on to the agenda today, whatever your political beliefs, there's a strong chance that Brexit will happen this month. And it's going to affect everyone, but in different ways. So it's worth just taking a few minutes today to have a look on the government website, which is gov.uk/brexit. So just have a look. If it doesn't happen, it doesn't happen. But it's worth just taking a look, just to make yourself informed. On today's agenda, shortly going to invite you to introduce yourselves and your business. Please try to keep it to 10 seconds because we are quite tight on time today. But I have allowed time at the end for you to talk about an event or promotion. So where you'd normally maybe talk about that upfront, save it till later on, because you definitely won't have the time to do that. Our guest speakers this month are Mark Hopgood. Now, I'll have to, it's another reason I've written this down. He's got the longest job title, I think, I've read now. He's a senior place development and investment project lead from Redcar and Cleveland Borough Council. I don't think you can fit it all in one title. He's going to be talking about regeneration plans for Redcar and Cleveland Borough, particularly in Redcar. And we've also have Ian Swales, Director of Redcar Racecourse. He's going to talk about a brief history of the racecourse, its importance and how businesses can benefit from getting involved with them as well. Okay, I think that's everything, first of all. So I think we'll start off with introductions. I'm going to start from the back. Brian, you're up. So literally go 10 seconds, introduce yourself, see what you're doing, and then we'll move to your right.
Brian Rockup, my role is dementia-friendly lead for Redcar Cleveland. And Middlesbrough as well, for Redcar Cleveland while I'm here. So all it is, is I'm looking for businesses. There's a lot of businesses in this room who came and have become dementia-friendly or working to become dementia-friendly. And I'm already talking now about Redcar Racecourse possibly becoming, I think will be the first racecourse in England to become a dementia-friendly racecourse. So that's what I do. Anyone want to catch me? The email address is on that sheet. But your sheet's too small to get the full email address.
I'm Melanie Hall. My business is restoration counselling and coaching. I work for one-to-one coaching and also mentor helping businesses. So if you're interested, can you ring me? We can talk about what your needs are.
My name's Laurie Osborne. We're going to be doing a startup business. Hopefully I'm the banker, a newcomer terrace, right across from the meagre. We're going to have three businesses, hopefully, in their holiday let's have a top. A cafe, bistro on the next level and then hopefully a micro bar at the bottom.
I'm Diane Harker, work for UK Steel Enterprise. We do equity finance and investment point in. We've got managed office and workshop space. If anyone's looking for space, come and see us.
Dean Court, I work for AC Media. And the project I look after is Wheels to Work. So anybody who's struggling for transport, that could be a car, it could be an electric scooter, a bike, a normal motorbike, we deal with all those sort of things at very reasonable prices.
Mike Martin, I also work for AC Media. So we're also becoming a social landlord. So we're starting up the housing association and building small developments for particular communities. So the Adelaide people who are going through long-term health conditions, potentially care leaders as well. So big plans, hopefully. We'll see, see if we can get a job out from this around that one.
Andrew Rose, I'm a partner at Boden's Accountants. We advise businesses of all shapes and sizes across the T side.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Atkinson. This is Alex from Seabreeze Fish and Chips in Redcar. And it's quite self-explanatory.
What do you need?
That's a single logo, where's the sample?
It's a bit too early.
Hello, I'm Claire Shaw. I work for a town Cleveland Borough Council and also property investor. Our vision is that ever building in Redcar and Cleveland, be residential, commercial, secure and available for people to live in and work in and it do so help to our community.
Hi, I'm Dawn Smith. We have a classing hotel at Redcar. We've had it for 44 years now. So we're probably one of the longest established family-run businesses. Basically, I'm just here because any advice I can offer or what I do know is that we've had a lot of changes in Redcar. We have good times and bad times in Redcar. But it's a good town and you can run a good business.
I'm Val Hogan, I'm from Northern Skills Group, which is the training arm of Middlesbrough College. If anybody's looking to take on any apprentices or would like some training for any of the staff, just give me a shout.
Hi, I'm Derek Campbell from Infinit Digital. We're a web design company focusing on business growth online. If anyone is looking to make the leap to sell online or just advertise visits online, then give me a shout.
Stephanie Costello, Visiting Destinational Officer for Redcar Cleveland Borough Council. My job role is to promote everything going from Redcar and the high-profile destination of Redcar.
Hi, everybody. My name's Laura Webster, Business Centre Officer for Redcar Cleveland Borough Council. If you're looking for office space, please come and see me. We've got units, meeting space and lovely office space. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Sarah Mont, I'm from Satori Life and Health, which is a holistic therapy business. And it's run from here in the heart. So if anybody's interested, it could be somebody who lets out the ballot within the business centre.
Hello, I'm Jane Hyrens. I'm the Events and Attractions Officer, working for a town Cleveland Borough Council. I'm here if anyone is thinking of organising an event, who can support you and give you the relevant advice.
Hi, I'm Paton Highfield and I am more than a run. I'd help people with turn or get started with physical activity, whether it's just some gentle walking, running or gentle exercises.
Hi, I'm Nick Mullie, Funding and Development Officer from Redcar Cleveland Mind. And we roll something in mind for cafes as well as lots of recovery services. And we also do free mental health post-it trim.
Good morning, I'm John Lambourne, just the general manager at Hampton by Hilton Hotel in Stockton. Really interested to hear about you because I've just started taking up running after having never done anything since I left school. I needed the ten day last weekend here in the one in Stockton.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Andrew Kelly from Redcar. I'm from college. Our listing has just been allocated a lot of money to help upscale existing employees for small and medium enterprises in the T side.
Hi, my name's Amy and I run Jeff Christopher, just round the corner on the corner of Queen Street and Lobster Road. My family have been there for over 30 years now and buy a wide range of furniture and all that stuff.
One of the others, my name's Lisa and I'm a mortgage asset protection broker. So when people are looking for a mortgage, it's quite often they would sit in a minefield of information with families who are going to, who's going to get the best deal. They're trying to, to me, I've been coming here with thousands of deals from all of them producing mortgage lenders. And I do also offer flexible working hours. So I kind of see people often getting these R and Bs. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Lisa as well. I work at Jackson Store in Stockton. We do a variety of things. We work with private clients, but we also work with commercial companies, small, medium-sized enterprises. We do health checks for businesses. We also deal with litigation, employment matters. I think we're probably going to be quite busy at the end of the month as well. So if we can help anyone do that, so.
Hi, everyone. My name is Frank Ramsay. I'm an acupuncturist and I work at the Lighthouse Therapy Centre.
Hello, I'm Derek. I have Daisy May's Vintage Tea Room down directly opposite Beacon. That's what it says, we're a tea room with over 40 teas. And we get served with vintage shiloh when you come to our place as well. It also comes very popular with our baby shells at the moment. So if you know anybody.
Okay.
Oh, sorry, I didn't realise. Hello, my name is Gemma. I'm here to represent the council's health improvement team. I'm here to discuss with any businesses if they are interested in becoming a breast friendly business at premises. I also work alongside Brian for anybody that's interested in dementia-friendly business and also turning to the staff. And lastly, excuse me, lastly, we also offer free health checks for staff as well as the community. So if your staff are interested and you want to provide that facility to other staff in the city, thank you.
Good morning, Stuart Myers, Public Sport Financial T side. I'm a self-employed financial advisor specializing in life insurance, illness cover, sick pay if you don't get it or do only get it for a short time. I work for Sport Financial T side based in Stockton, although I live in New York, so I can cover any area. We actually base time opposite the Hampton by Hilton. Yeah, and we're part of the Prime's Mortgage Network, which covers the whole of the UK. And I think since last time I was here, they've actually been named the number one firm out of 2,000 firms for life insurance. So it's quite a good thing to do for everyone. Thank you.
Good morning, everybody. My name's David. I'm from Artis C North. We're a business support organisation. We help companies across the North of England, mainly in areas of innovation and new product development.
Morning, everybody. My name's Joanna Andrews and I run Town Productions UK. We are a vintage entertainment specialist. So we have shows that cover a variety of things. Currently, we have Lipsticks, who are a vintage trio who performed at Lot Park for Jane. We also have the Jersey Dream Boats and they'll be back at Tuned In over Christmas. We run the Isabel Mumford Mysteries and the Mad Hatter's Tea Party, which will be at Daisy May's Vintage Tea Room over half term. We also do bespoke entertainment. So if you've got a theme that requires some vintage entertainment, visit us, give us a call and we'll see what we can do to get you a great show.
Karen King helped run the network. I'm also a award-winning humanist, wedding, baby naming and funeral celebrant.
Yeah, good morning, Mark Hopgood from Redcar Cleveland Council. I'm just doing my stuff in the middle of the night. I'm Ian Swales and you'll hear more from me in a minute too.
I'm Adam Brock. I'm an elected member of the company and I'm sure just popped along today to see what's up.
I'm Robert Clark. I am the director of a home fragrance and cosmetics wholesale company. And so I don't like rush, but definitely. He just sort of explained it.
Okay, you already know me. I'm Darren Winter, Dico Digital. My business, we create and build websites, help with social media, search engine optimisation, advertising, marketing and training. Okay, I think that's everybody fantastic. It's good to see some new faces as well. We're actually bang on time, exactly 80 copies is fantastic. So I'm going to introduce Mark Hopgood now. I'll let you say the long title. I thought I was saying my long title. Yeah, so a quick introduction. My name's Mark Hopgood from Redcar Cleveland Council, which is part of the Growth Economy and Environmental Director here at Redcar Cleveland Council. I've got 10 minutes really, so I'm going to whistle through some of the project work that we do with the owners. I'm going to concentrate on Redcar and just Redcar. So I'm not expanding across the borough. I don't have time for that. There's a little bit of background. Back in March 2018, the council released its growth plans. And they were, if you remember, 99 projects that were going to be developing over the next five years. For Redcar, it was the Redcar Growth Plan along with our master plan vision. So there's a little bit of explanation about what we're doing with our major projects since we did open that sort of 18 months ago. I'll talk about the Regent Cinema first, redevelopment of the Regent Cinema. Then a bit about the station and finally the work we're doing at Cotum. So the Regent Cinema, just at the end of Station Road, everybody knows it in Redcar. We had to close that in April 2018 mainly because of the big structural issues with the building. It became too unsafe or potentially unsafe for people attending the cinema. We then undertook a strip out in summer 2018 mainly to take out asbestos from the building. And unfortunately, that is the current state of the inside of the building. The council have committed to redevelop the Regent Cinema. And since the end of 2018, we've been undertaking feasibility work. It was decided that we weren't going to do the five-screen cinema on the Cotum Bowl site. The cinema was only going to be here at the Regent. So we pulled together a full design team, developed the feasibility into the concept stage. And this is why I'm just going to show you a little bit about the concept stage today. Essentially, we are going to cabinet this November for approval for expenditure through our investment fund to kickstart the rest of the development. So we're in concept stage. So we pulled together the full design team and we consulted with what we call the Cinema Advisory Group. Experts from independent cinema across the country have advised us then what the makeup of the cinema should be and what it should function like. We've also gone out to the market across the country again and inquiring the market through soft market testing for feedback of how that should be developed and how it should be operated to ensure that we have a sustainable cinema for the long-term future. So essentially, we are now going to develop a three-screen cinema with approximately 30, 60 and 90-seat cinemas. It'll have a cafe and event space, which is quite small. I'll show you some drawings in a moment. Obviously, you'll have the foyer, the ticket and concession space and the usual sort of toilets, offices, storage, circulation, etc. But equally, we need to make use of the great views that are potentially there. So we're going to do an extended terrace out the back. So I hope you can see that they're only small, I beg your pardon. So what we have at the moment, we're going to develop this cinema on exactly the same site, on the same footprint. And that's been the challenge for the design team. We're going to have two screens on the ground floor. So you'll come in here through the purple area, through the reception, tickets, concessions and a foyer here to the 30-seater screen and the larger 90-seater screen on the ground floor. You'll go up the stairs or up the lift to the first floor. We've got the second cinema, the 50 or 60-seater, with a cafe and event space overlooking the sea on all three sides with a small terrace out the back. Yet the larger screen does actually sort of go down to the basement level. So it's very similar in terms of it being built up off the beach. In section here, you can see it's a lot more sort of, it's more of a box shape than the current sort of the shed on the back. But you can see from the red lines here roughly, it's going to be about the same size in proportion. Second project I want to talk about today is Redcar Central Station. We've got money, development money from TBCA to develop the first part of the station building. So again, last year up to April this year, we've developed design up to what we call a Reba Stage Three. So sufficient really to go out really to go to planning. But we had to stop unfortunately. We're ready to go to planning to actually redevelop that station building. And we have funding from TBCA, full funding to do this, but we don't have a long lease. We've been trying to negotiate a long lease with Network Rail and the Arch Co, who now own the lease. And we're not getting anywhere unfortunately. So that work is ongoing. But unfortunately, the program to redevelop that is totally uncertain at the moment.
It was just on the news this morning about the back's roosting. So they've delayed any work that they're doing themselves until March next year.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So what we're trying to do, because it's in such a state, the building is such a state and it's a grade two listed building, through planning enforcement, we're trying to force the Arch Co to repair the roof. So it actually stops any further deterioration. But unfortunately, as Karen said, because of certain circumstances, they can't do anything. It's a real shame, but we want to get on, we want to crack on with this. The idea is we want to repurpose that station building into a station building. Essentially, we want people to come in to the front of the building and come into a great space at the station. So we will refurb the building completely inside and out. We'll strip out the old offices, which were converted in the 1980s, into a much more flexible space in this area. And these pods here are very much sort of flexible lightweight pods that can be put up very quickly. We'll use the space for, could be for indoor markets, artisan markets. It could be for events. Redcar really doesn't have a large, medium to large indoor space that you can have these sort of things out with the rain, out with the wind and in some comfort. But equally, with a station, we'll be looking for ticket machines, travel information boards, comfortable places to sit for the trains. And obviously, we've had the announcement that Manchester trains will be direct from Redcar now. And possibly in the future, we might get direct London trains as well. So now's the time to revitalize the Redcar station. Just a couple of graphics there. So we'll completely refurbish externally, completely refurbish the roof. But it is a grade two listed building, so externally certainly we'll have to be sympathetic. Internally, there's a lot more flexibility in terms of creating sort of great spaces or pods. So it could be for retail, it could be for newsagent, it could be for cafes, it could be for other food and entertainment. Just some architects' images really, all about what that space could be like and what it could be. And finally, this morning, I just wanted to talk briefly about Cotum. As you know, as part of the growth plans, we submitted a master plan vision. And what we've been doing this year is actually to expand that master plan vision into a more detailed master plan for Cotum. Cotum will be a leisure-led development essentially for the people of Redcar and for the visitors to attract people into Redcar and hopefully get them to stay longer and stay over. We've pulled together a full design team for this with experts from the region who are helping us, supporting us on developing this master plan. And this is where we are at the moment. We have quite a few iterations of the master plan, so this is not fixed by any means. But we will be doing this in phases. We can't do it all at once. So essentially, the first real sort of push we're sort of doing at the moment is the development of the next tune-in. So we're looking to develop a new 40-bed hotel with a potential to expand to 60-bed. And next to that, sort of coming down the Juber Road, we want to do a couple of restaurant units down there. And also a sort of public facilities and showers and things that people, when they use the beach, and try and use some beach promotion. And a small sort of cafe, a very small cafe kiosk that could potentially run a small sort of golf or adventure playground. And there's also potential for some beach shops down here. And finally, at the end, for our equine visitors, I'm looking for some specific parking for horse boxes and potential statement. We want to do something with the village green. Okay, at the moment, it's not really used to its maximum. But any touch, any sort of redevelopment there with very, very light touch. We're potentially sort of thinking of maybe a nature route on boardwalks or potentially an exercise route on there with some new fencing around the outside. But that is it, nothing more than that. And finally, on the old Cotum Bowl side, we want to develop indoor leisure. And this is the sort of leisure that Redcar doesn't have at the moment and that I think badly needs indoor attractions for visitors. So that when the weather's not great, which is not always great in Redcar, that people can go and stay. So we're looking at sort of small-scale temping bowling, clip and climb, laser active or even sort of indoor adventure golf and things like that. That's not fixed yet by any means. We're still sort of doing inquiries into the market and then trying to see what sort of leisure Redcar is going to attract. And that's me. Thank you very much indeed. You got any questions?
Yeah, I've got a question. The only part of that that is at the moment to be fixed then is your new hotel. Do you actually have a developer for your hotel? Do you know who it's going to be? Obviously, I've got a hotel in town, this is of huge concern, to be honest, to the hoteliers that are already here.
Yeah. Essentially, what we're trying to do is we're trying to attract more visitors into Redcar and people, get people to stay. So the sort of development that we want to create in Redcar, I think, needs more accommodation. We think sort of needs more accommodation. So essentially, yes, we've gone to the market. We've asked for some market interest and we've had some market interest from hotel developers and hotel operators. However, we have to go through a procurement exercise to get them on board. And that's what we'll be kicking off very shortly to ensure that because we're a public body, we have to make sure that that's open to competition. So that's the process we're going through at the moment.
Right, so at the moment, it's just, if you're asking my honest opinion, you're not going to end up with extra bed space. What you're going to do is close down what's already here. Because we're not playing on an equal field because you're actually providing them with money to build this hotel.
No, essentially, this hotel will be self-financed. We will not be funding the hotel. It'll be a private development through a land, probably through a land deal. So we'll offer that to the market. So it's really, if the operator sees an opportunity in Redcar for their model, if you like, which at the moment, we're looking at a family pub restaurant and 40-bed hotel model. But really, it depends what the market sort of is going to come.
Yeah, so what we're looking at is a national that takes the money out of the town anyway. See, I see your point about, right, I wouldn't dispute on race weekends, on beach festivals, you need accommodation in the town. I don't dispute that for a moment. But in November, December, January, February, there's not a lot of trade in this town. And I'll be honest, as a longstanding hotelier, it's a huge concern. I can also say that it's the same concern to the hotel. Your longstanding businesses and not necessarily won't survive, in which case you've got no extra beds.
Essentially, when we've spoken to the hotel operators, his market during the week is the sort of businesses that we're losing trade from, from the likes of Wilton and elsewhere in the borough. Essentially, everybody from Wilton at a certain sort of level will go to Stockton. I've already spoken to Stockton Hotel. Yes, they are pulling trade away from Redcar into Middlesbrough. And Middlesbrough are developing quite a few hotels. What we want to do is get that trade back into Redcar. And also, during the weekends and stuff with this, there's accommodation available for people to add to the weekend entertainment to try and accommodate the increased visitors that we're trying to achieve here in Redcar. So we think we can work with the hoteliers at the moment and with the breakfast around Redcar to support a growing visitor number.
But at no point in time, then, would we speak to the hoteliers or have breakfast at Redcar? So you're saying that you think you can work with us, but there's been no consultation or discussion with any of us at all? Perhaps spoken to the others. We know what the trade levels are like and we know how difficult. And I don't dispute we've been here 44 years, but it's not easy. And you have to change and you have to adapt. And I don't object to new things, but there has been no council consultation with us at all in any shape or form.
Okay, what we've done, we've gone to the market and we've done some research through consultants for what this additional footfall could be. And the feedback from the market is you need additional bed space, quantity bed space in Redcar to accommodate the increased visitor numbers that we hope to get.
See, I find that incredible that you can make that decision without speaking to businesses that are there originally. And I'm not just talking about myself. I've spoken to the others and nobody's been spoken to at all.
Okay, I'm going to kind of hold it here because I think this is a conversation to have after the network. I think you bring up some valid points. And I think it would be good to get kind of understand what the resolution is afterwards. Brian, do you want to say?
Just one quick question. I mean, not quick on there, but the cinema, I mean, for an area like Redcar Cleveland, if you're not the cinema for how long, what's the timescale? If people have to, if they want to go see his Downton Abbey or whatever's up at the moment or on the Mia, they have to actually travel to Middlesbrough? So what's the timescale on that?
Okay, so essentially, what we hope to be onsite, redeveloping the Regent Cinema in the summer of next year, about July next year. It's going to take at least 15 or 16 months to complete that. So really, the time scales are for an opening in early 2022. In the meantime, what we're doing is we're working with Saltburn Community Theatre to put on a temporary sort of cinema venue to support the sort of the fact that we don't have a cinema in the borough at the moment. So we're working with them and providing grants for new equipment and supporting. So we're working with them and providing grants for new equipment and supporting with funding for revenue for staff to create a, they have a cinema club at the moment, but we want to try and increase the number of showings across the week. So we're working with them at the moment and hopefully, within the next couple of months or so, we'll hopefully be up and running with that.
Literally, just any other, one more, two questions and then some from Amy and
What's the timescale for the other?
Okay, a little bit more fluid on that one because we're still looking at the master plan stage. So what we want to, because it's in phases, we'll probably go for an outline planning for everything as soon as possible. So we're looking for Easter, May, June next year for an outline planning application. But equally, we're going forward with the first phase for the hotel operator tender very, very shortly. So I would say literally by middle of next year, we'll have the funding in place, we'll have the cabinet approval, we'll have phase one away and we'll have further phases, more developments in terms of design. But I don't have any firm timescales for the rest.
And you don't have anything for the train station at the moment, it's not actually
We did, we did. And literally, we should be well into detailed design and tendering for contractors now. But there's just no movement from the Archco or Network Rail. We were lucky enough through our director to get contact with the Chair of Network Rail and he's promised to help us to try and unlock this. So we might see some movement soon, but at the moment, nothing.
Is there anything that you can do about, like the Cotum Land or the train station in the interim? Because small businesses can
I know, I know. The train station was trying to force, if you like, Archco through the planning enforcement to try and improve the condition because it's in such a poor condition.
And at the moment, on the night time, I don't think people even walk past because it's
No, we're completely
It's dangerous, it's scary.
Absolutely. And we are trying to force this through now, but we have little success. So what we could do, and we can't do anything now because of the backlash to this, as Karen has said. But in the new year, we will try and force them to do this or we'll get the lease so we can do it sooner than later.
Yeah, because it's like a Cotum boat landing and everything like that as well. Because obviously, we've got the Tour de Yorkshire coming in next year. And that's the first thing people see when they come into Redcar is the Cotum boat and the train station. And both of them are horrendous.
Absolutely. On the same page with it, it's extremely frustrating about the station. In terms of the Cotum site, yes, I think what we need to consider along with the first phase is can we tidy up that sort of Cotum boat site? And it might even be sort of, can we put a temporary car park on there or part of it for now to support the Tour de Yorkshire?
Yeah, we suggested that we would help towards that like about five years ago.
I think now we've got investment money coming back into the borough through TVCA devolved funding. These are the plans that we released through the growth plans. But essentially, yeah, we will try and do something for that Cotum boat site.
I think the hardest thing is that there's just not any communication at the moment between businesses that have been there a long time. So it is a bit scary because it affects a lot of families, a lot of, you know, businesses.
I think now is the time, Amy. Now we've sort of developed plans and concepts that are sort of coming through. It's now is the time to engage with the public and business associations to say this is what we're doing now.
Yeah.
I think it's a little bit pointless until we have something a little bit more concrete to be able to show you what we're doing and the plans and the timescale.
We could always help with ideas though, even like initially, you know, a lot of these businesses being here, you know, decades.
I mean, we're down there all the time, you know, what people are wanting.
Well, mate, if I just, because we've got really careful time, I'm so sorry. Maybe there's a good chance then we'll invite you back next week, next week, next year in a different capacity and we can have perhaps a bit more sensitive talks, like you said, when you've got something more concrete.
Just very fine. Yes, we're going to do some public consultation on all these schemes. We're going to start with the Regent Cinema at the back end of November and once we've got the cabinet approval. And we will be coming out and we're doing quite an extensive sort of community consultation. And we will do it on the others as well.
Just your question just last, yeah?
Question on the Regent Cinema. Are you able to keep any of the existing internal features? Because it looks quite natural.
Yeah, it is. Now, essentially, the cinema is at the end of its physical life. It's nearly a hundred years old, parts of it anyway, so we're going to have to do an extensive redevelopment. So we're in concept at the moment, so the next stage is all about the detail around it. So there will be extensive remodelling and rebuild for that. So can I come back to you in a few months' time when we've got the more detail on that? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. My computer's just fried. I've got the slide, I'm sorry. Just not expanding. Hand you over to Ian Swales, Director of Redco Racecourse. He's, I think, going to kind of follow in terms of the passion, I think, for Redcar.
Morning, everyone. Those of you who don't know me Sorry, can we stand over here, please? Thank you.
That's it.
Oh, sorry. Those of you who don't know me, I worked for a long time at Wilton, then ran my own training and consulting business. For five years from 2010 to 2015, I was the Member of Parliament for Redcar. So lived here a long time, a lot of passion for the area. By the way, as a P S to that presentation, I don't know if any of you have looked at the South Tees Development Corporation master plan. But the plan is to make tourist area all the way from Cotum up to South Gare, the bit that looks private at the moment to be for tourists. So that's just a P S to the presentation that we had. Yeah, so I'm basically retired now, but my one business activity alongside the charity stuff I do is non-executive director of the racecourse. So I've only been doing that since the first of June, but I thought I'd just come and tell you a bit about it. We've had racing in Redcar since the seventeen hundreds and the course has been in the current place since the mid eighteen hundreds. So it's been a feature of the town ever since the town was just, you know, one street of houses over there, there's been racing here. I guess driven by the landed gentry and the course is still basically owned by two families. One of which is the Marquess of Zetland, who I think owned all this area at one time, or his family did. So we have a fantastic racecourse here. We're one of the only courses in the country that has a straight mile. And anyone who's tried to get around Redcar knows the course is a mile long because you either cross the town down in the Aldi area or you have to cross it up here because the course takes up a mile of the town and the town surrounds the course. It's very popular with owners and trainers. It's well-drained, it's flat, which most racecourses aren't. And we, and I'll explain why that's important in a moment. But we're second only to York in terms of the highest average number of runners per race in the country. I was really surprised when I heard that statistic, but it is very popular. And if you look on any given race day, there's horses from as far as Wiltshire, lots from Newmarket, all travelling up here to run on our course. This Saturday, in fact, we've got the most valuable race of the whole season, a hundred and seventy-five thousand pound prize and it will be on mainstream television. And just recently, we picked up the 2018 award for the best small racecourse in the north of England and Scotland, voted on by racegoers. So that's not owners and trainers, that's the people who've actually come. So we've got a very successful course in the town. And of course, the racecourse puts Redcar on the map. If you travel around the country and you say you're from Redcar, well, a lot of people say, where's that? But those who do know where it is, it's usually to do with the racecourse. It's in the papers, it's on the TV. You know, it's the thing that, it's the one big, huge national thing that we have really in the town. So very, very important part of the town. And we're part of a consortium called Go Racing in Yorkshire. Of course, it's very controversial whether Redcar's in Yorkshire or not, but it is historically. The boundary of Yorkshire was always the River Tees. So we're in Yorkshire, we're getting the Tour de Yorkshire and we're in this consortium. I think there's the nine racecourses in Yorkshire, I think it's nine. And we are part of the marketing of that consortium. So, you know, we get a look whenever you go to the races and talk to people about where they've come from. An awful lot visit from, you know, outside the town and even the close surrounding area. Those who sort of, if you go on a race day and you look around, particularly a mid-week race day, there don't seem to be that many people there. So you must be thinking, well, does it make money? Well, it's a multi-million pound business and yes, it's profitable. Why is that? Because the bread and butter of the racecourse is not people going through the gates. It's money that comes in from bookmakers and TV. It's a bit like football, you know, the Middlesbrough football, well, Premier League clubs, let's not talk about Middlesbrough. Premier League clubs would make money even if nobody came to watch because it's all about TV in their case. In the rate, to do with the racecourse, it's all about TV and the share of bookmaking turnover. And that's why this average number of runners is important because I've now understood more about how it works. We get a certain amount of money for each race with ten runners. We lose a bit if there's less than ten and we gain a bit if there's more than ten, up to sixteen, which tells you what bookmakers like. They like, you know, competitive racing with decent-sized fields. And as I say, we do, you know, if you look at Haydock Park last Friday, they had a race with four runners. Well, we don't get that here, you know, it's a popular course. So that helps it to be profitable. So part of the reason I've come along here today is I thought to myself, well, what do I want to see? Why have I even taken this job? Partly because it's fun, because I like racing and I can walk. When I got my form to be a director, it had a, we'll give you expenses for travelling to race days. So I said, in about ten years' time, I'll charge you for a pair of shoes because it's a ten-minute walk for me to go. I think the racecourse doesn't interact with the town as well as it should. You know, the directors don't live around here, quite a few of the main staff don't live around here. So I think there's a need for better interaction. I know Amy, the general manager, is now one of the Redcar ambassadors and that's great to see. I also want more people to visit the racecourse. I think a lot of people have a picture of racing that's false. You know, some people think it's for rich people or it's, you know, or there's, I don't know, people have weird concepts about it. It's just an entertainment. The racecourse is a nice place to go. There's lots of good facilities for eating and so on if you want to eat. And one thing I ask people, do you know that it's free for under eighteen-year-olds with an adult? And they don't. So, you know, again, it's pretty cheap to go for families as well, particularly on the inside of the course, which is apparently, I'm told, is the cheapest, the inside of the course is the cheapest racing in the country. It's the lowest cost of any course in the country. And as far as businesses are concerned, I think, I mean, it's up to, I've been told not to do a hard sell here, but there are lots of opportunities for businesses at the racecourse, particularly for advertising, sponsorship, that kind of thing. I was amazed, I asked for a pairing for this, I said, how much does it cost to have one of those huge plastic banners near the winning post that you see on TV as the horses are running past? I don't know what people would think in the room, but fifteen hundred pounds for the season, that's all to have, you know, a company name right by the winning post or along the rails as the horses are coming. And there's lots of examples like that. So it's probably lower cost for businesses to be involved than you might think, you know, having adverts or whatever. The other thing I want to see is, it's a huge area of the town that's active for eighteen days of the year. That's all we have. So I would like to, and we're very open to ideas, what could happen there on the other three hundred and forty-seven days when there isn't any racing? It's a huge area of land, there's stables, really good stables. Because when they sold the land to Tesco, it was some years ago, or Safeways as it was then. They built state-of-the-art stables, hostel accommodation for stable staff. It all just sits there, the whole course just, they do do functions, you know, weddings and that kind of thing. But it really is not used very much on the other three hundred and forty-seven days of the year. So with all this creativity in the room, I'm sure some of you can think of ways that it might be. Right, I'll say no more. I'm happy to take questions and comments. Yes?
If you were to want to plan an event at the racecourse, who would you get in touch with?
Well, you probably, by the sounds of it. I don't know, I'm new to it, so I've never planned an event at the racecourse. I don't know, but give me a card afterwards, I'll make sure you're known as one of the people who could put an event on. They have lots of rooms and facilities then, you know, it's a good venue.
No, I know that, but I've never known who I emailed to book one of them.
Okay, oh, really?
Yeah.
Right, interesting. Right, good. Well, there's loads of parking as well, so give me a card afterwards, we'll sort that out. Yes?
Can I just make a suggestion? Why don't you do an event where you just invite all the business people to come along so we can see what's there?
Yeah, do you know, it's funny you should say that, but in my, because I'm also a creative person, all the things I wrote down about should have, that's one of the ideas I've already got. Because, yeah, why not an open day? I actually think as well, the funny thing about people in racing is it's a world of its own and they don't realise how fascinating it is, you know, and I think open days for the public as well. Riverside Stadium do it and what are you going to see? Just a little green patch of ground and stands. But there, you know, you can see stables, you can see the weighing room for the jockeys. I found that fascinating. The big crate of little thin slivers of lead that they put in the saddles to make them the right weight. And it's so interesting to see it all, you know. So yes, good idea. Yeah?
Yeah, Amy, I did do for me a couple of tours on another project I was involved with. It's a bit like with the football club, once you ignore there's a big bit of grass. When you get the opportunity to sit in changing rooms and actually walk through the tunnels. And I think you can do an awful lot more tours of Redco Racecourse to a range of different groups as well. So you can make the few specific two suit needs of various groups.
Yeah, yeah. Because I think that's another thing, you know, it's just not that, you know, so many people in the town have just simply never been there under any, you know, in any form, you know, for racing or any other reason. Yeah, thanks, that's good. Yeah? Yes, at the back? Yeah?
Yeah, yeah. Years ago, when I was a child, the racecourse was very integrated into the town. And we would get coaches, we used to pull the Duke Car Park.
Yeah.
And it was big business.
Yeah.
Those people dropped off there, they came into the town, they spent money, they regenerated the area and walked up to the racecourse.
Yeah.
That dwindled, I think word was, people were maybe a bit too much on the drink. But what I heard was you had families, they came up with families. Wives, children, maybe spent the day on the beach, parents went down to the racecourse. But it was, it was big money.
Yeah, yeah.
I was going back a lot of years. How can we sort of bring that back together?
It's interesting you say that because one of the things I've, you know, phrases I've got is we're all competing for the leisure pand, if you like, and it's tougher, it's tougher than it was then. I mean, I think one of the things has been that my wife is the daughter of a Durham miner. She used to go on Redco to Redco for a holiday as a child. And then the working men's club in their village, she used to bring coaches to the races and things. The culture is not quite the same now, so
I mean, I appreciate that has changed because that is primarily what came up.
Yeah, yeah.
It was day trips, it was pit villages, miners, and that's how it worked.
So it's a modern-day challenge and one of the things I want them to focus on. They focus a lot on owners and trainers because that's the, as I said, that's where the bread and butter comes from, is getting horses to come. I want them to also focus on the visitor experience and I think there's a lot that can be done. Like there's a real lack of seating and, for example.
You are known nationwide, you know, up and down the country. So to be able to use that, you know, that power and get people actually into the town.
Yeah.
You know, rather than just at the racecourse.
Yes.
I mean, it was horrific when we heard that they were going to try and move the racecourse.
Oh, yeah.
Um, onto, I mean, that was just, that was frightening.
Well, that's one reason I've joined the board is to make sure that never happens on my watch anyway, but yes, I agree. But, you know, it does bring business into the town. I'd sat the very first time when I was a director and sat with some owners and trainers. I was chatting with this guy from Newmarket and he said that he wasn't going back to Newmarket because he had a runner at Wolverhampton the next day, so he wasn't going, so he was staying in Redcar at the Claxton.
See, I mean, we're the opposite, the opposite end. And so we write down, you know, what we will be regenerating. But we do get people from the races, you know, they are big days for us, you know. Not so many of the eighteen, but we certainly get a good fifteen of them throughout the year that, you know, we know is race day.
Yeah, of course, yeah. Yeah, of course, yeah.
And people sort of think, oh, where's that come from?
Yeah, yeah.
But it is from the races, so they do come right down.
It does, but we can do a lot better, I'm sure, you know, that's one of my targets.
Even locally, people don't realise it is a nice holiday event.
Yeah.
I genuinely, I admit, I've lived here all my life. The last couple of years, we've taken our grandchildren to the family fun day.
Yeah, yeah.
It's, people think races, drink, drunks. Actually, it's really good fun and the kids love it and they get really excited by the horses running and all the rest of it. And it's, even locally, people don't necessarily think it's family entertainment.
No, no.
They think drinking and a night, and a day on the town afterwards. But it's, it's sort of, you've done some really good events now and it's nice that it's turned into big events and themed things and that.
Yeah. No, you're right, you're right, and to be fair...
You don't people realise that actually it's a good family day out.
To be fair, I think it's something I, and none of, nobody in this room can change people's perception of horse racing. We have to try and, but that's partly just by getting people to come and the fact you can, you know, it's so cheap to come to the family part on the inside and you can bring a picnic, you can bring your own drink, you don't have to pay the prices.
They do bring picnics there, I doubt on the rock. There's bouncy castles and things for the kids, it's all free. The kids think it's wonderful because you go on and have as much as you want and won't have to shell out a couple of quid every time. So for what it actually costs you to get in in the first place, it, it is quite a cheap, um, town with the fans.
Well, thanks for that testimonial, any other...
One joint ad for Redcar Racecourse here, it's good.
It's a good advert. The just thing, drinking that side of it, drinking that way, like actually the kids quite enjoy it.
Yeah, yeah.
It's really on that, that vein, Ladies' Day, in Ascot, that's got a really good reputation.
Yeah.
Here, Ladies' Day, my reputation is a bit of an oxymoron, ladies don't go to it.
Well, all I can, all I can say is, it's, depends what you mean by a lady.
Wow, it's mostly popular at the house.
A Redcar hat maker made seventy hats for this year's Ladies' Day. I mean, it's, it's our biggest day in terms of attendance by quite a margin and, yeah, I don't know. Depends what you mean by ladies, but there's plenty of ladies go and yes, they have a good time.
All day drinking.
I know what you, I know what you're saying.
So here's our reputation, which you say Redcar Racecourse is known throughout the country.
Yeah.
So it's a reputation which will reflect through the country as well.
Well, yeah, I don't know, I don't know. I know what you're saying, yeah.
Okay, just one more question then to the back.
What, what is your typical attendance to race day and what is your capacity?
Um, gosh, I mean, I think the capacity is, depends how you measure it, it's huge. I mean, people say there was, used to be over thirty thousand there on Zetland Gold Cup Day, you know, and I'm sure you could get more in. Midweek now, less than two thousand, big weekend days, four, five thousand, that sort of figure. I mean, there's, one of our, as I said, our Saturdays are our last really big day of the year. And there is two, two tiers because midweek, you know, we, the weekend type meetings, we tend to have themes, Ladies' Day being one, this, this one's Oktoberfest, but the racing tends to be a bit higher quality and we get higher attendance. Midweek is, you know, lower key and the, and the prices to get in reflect that, you know, it's cheaper to get in on the midweek days.
And do you, do you know where, what your sort of radius is for people attending on a race?
Well, as I said, I taught, you know, I've walked into town with somebody, someone from Liverpool, you know. I mean, people do come from all over and, and to me, some, one of the other directors who doesn't live round here said, oh, well, Redcar is so difficult for Redcar, isn't it? Because you're on the edge of the country. And I said, yeah, and it's worse because we've got the River Tees with no crossing from Stockton down to here, so we are right in a corner. But then I said, but do you realise that I think half a million people are within thirty minutes of here by car? But to me, not nearly enough of those half a million actually come, you know, I don't know what we do, but, you know, I think we can do better anyway, but people do come from all over.
Okay, thank you very much indeed, thank you to Eve as well. I did promise, a little bit, sorry, we are late running and I apologise, but I think it's great to give you the opportunity to ask questions and to give the speakers a bit more time to cover what they need to, to cover. But if anybody'd like to mention any events, just for the next like twenty second, or next two minutes, anybody want to say, yeah, we've got two here.
Do you want me to do both of them?
Yeah, you can, then I'll do the rest. Okay. So we've got a few things coming up in the couple, in the next couple of months in Redcar. So on the twenty ninth of October, Daisy Mae's Tea Room will host a Mad Hatter's Tea Party. It's an interactive afternoon tea with the March Hare, the Hatter and Alice. It's great fun for all the family, for grownups and kids as well. It's, I'm going to get the figures wrong, aren't I? Ten pounds for something?
Um, I don't know, look on the web, look on our Facebook page. There is a bit of events going on, so it's getting confusing.
There is a, there is a Facebook event and tickets are available from the Tea Room. We've only got nine tickets left for that event. On the seventh of December, we've got a vintage murder mystery happening at Daisy Mae's Tea Room. Tickets are available through Eventbrite, so you can buy them through either of our Facebook pages or on Eventbrite. And the Lipsticks and the Jersey Dreambooks will be back at Tuned In this year for the second year in a row with a very vintage Christmas and tickets are twelve pounds are available on Eventbrite as well. Dates, that's on the fourteenth of December, yes, I'm right, fourteenth of December.
Okay, anybody else? Okay.
I've got more. The eighteenth of October, we're doing Make Your Own Christmas Cake. If anybody would like to come and join us, there's about three places left. And thirteenth of December, just a heads up, Vintage Christmas with Damris G. She's quite well known on the circuit and is very good, she comes every Christmas to us. And then if you've made your Christmas cake and you want to decorate it, the eighteenth of December, we'll be in and do that. It's all on the Facebook page, okay.
We've got two, two hands, low, low in that gentleman in the back, shall we? You look, I'm going to go first.
Okay, fifteenth of October, I'm trying a little seminar, it's a two-hour thing in the afternoon at Kirkleam Innovation Centre. It's called Knowing Your Numbers, anybody who's got a business and doesn't understand business metrics, finance, that kind of thing, it covers all of that, it's free to attend. If anybody wants to come along, just grab me before you go. It will be on Eventbrite before the end of the week, but it's not there yet.
Give us the link and we'll pop it up on the Facebook page later, yeah?
Oh, you know, I didn't get to introduce myself earlier. I work for a, I clearly am counsel in the Business Growth Team. We have a few events coming up, best watch out on Twitter and our Facebook, not Facebook, Eventbrite and our website. So there is one coming up to, for Brexit and there is another one to help those who wish to sell outside of the country internationally, just to prepare you and help you to think, but those are two separate events by the way. And there is on the fifth of November, a social finance conference at the, at Tuned In. That will be looking at funding and social finance, investors, investees, exchanging experiences, everyone's welcome.
Fantastic, I've got one event myself, just to make, well, I've got two things I need to mention. For those who aren't Redcar Cleveland ambassadors, basically, it's just a free scheme. You're all businesses or you've been doing business within the Redcar Cleveland area. It's free to sign up to be a Redcar Cleveland ambassador, just go to redcarcleveland.co.uk, just look to where the signup page is, just drop them an email with your name and address. All it is, is that you're talking positively about Redcar in Cleveland and they just keep you up to date with what's happening around the borough. So please go and try and do it this week, we're trying to get the numbers increased. The more, more people we get, more people talking about good things around the area, the more they'll help us talk up business. And the other one that we, the other announcement I'd like to make is that we, because we've been asked by two people to, who want to grow the business via newsletters, it's quite difficult with GDPR and just understanding videos. So we're holding a newsletter workshop on Tuesday, Tuesday the twenty-second of October. Again, we're at the Innovation Centre as well. So if you're interested in that, come and see us, it is up on Eventbrite, it's quite a low cost. You typically pay a lot of money for this, so it's a four-hour workshop and we'll show you everything you need to grow your business to do that if you're interested, okay? I think that's everything. I just want to say thank you very much to our guest speakers, Mark Hopgood and Ian Swales and for everybody attending today. I hope you enjoyed the event and looking forward to welcoming you next month, which is Wednesday the sixth of November. It's the last one of twenty nineteen because we don't have an event in December because everybody's too busy. The tickets are now available on Eventbrite.
We do have a pub call.
Oh, there's a pub call, but it's not this.
It's not.
Well, I mean, everyone's invited.
Everyone's invited, it's a long draw.
We're going to put the events out, we're meeting in a pub, if anyone wants to join us, stay for as long as you want. Me and Joanna and I, we're last women standing.
Yeah, or not standing.
We'll have it on Facebook and anything you want to share, please can just tag us in, we'll share it, so it's open to everybody. So if you want to share, we'll pop it up on Facebook. Thanks very much, have a great day and have a great week, thank you.